He will be coming back tonight for his community meeting, but we will go ahead and get started. The purpose of this meeting is for us, last time we met, we had answered questions to formulate the resolution. It's been about a week for us. We've had time to look at it. Hopefully, if there have been any questions, you've had opportunities to either schedule a meeting with Ms. Chastain or Dr. Green. The purpose of this meeting is for us as a board to go through this before tomorrow night so we can have any discussion and point out if there needs to be any, if there's any change or any concerns that anyone has prior to tomorrow vote. So I open it up to the board for anyone who might have comments or feedbacks or things that we think, or think need to be addressed before our meeting tomorrow night. I will point out that the way this works for us is that the conversation with the city council begins with the resolution that is sent over and then it goes from there as far as we just got. Ms. Chastain, would you like to share the, what we just got from OGC?
Good morning. Chairman Hershey and board members, my colleague Stephen Durden from the Office of General Counsel is here and he is better able, I didn't track this, so you know, I'm looking at it as well. And Mr. Durden looked at this and I think can have a deeper conversation than I could.
Okay, with the resolution, should we talk about the memorandum?
Whichever. I thought that's what you were referring to.
Yes, that would probably be good.
As far as the memorandum, this is, I did this as quickly as I possibly could, but this is clearly an important memorandum, how about that? I did significant research, I hope you can tell by looking at various, as you go through it, you'll see that I have cited quite a few different kinds of cases on a variety of topics. The statute itself is one that says that you, the board, have the authority to levy a tax. It also provides the sales tax, the surtax. It also provides that the city council, or actually the county commission, but in this case it would be the city council, to clarify, that does include the mayor. In our case, the mayor has authority to veto anything like any other bill. So it's inclusive of the city council adoption process. And it does say that the, let me get the exact words, the statement shall conform to the requirements of 101.161, which of course we hope we've done, and we've worked very hard to get this, that's one of the, I've done resolutions, a referendum before, and it's always complicated to do in 75 words, both say enough and not, and keep it within 75 words and not be vague and not be misleading. But I think we achieved that. I'm confident in our, in our language. It is better to fight significantly. But then it says, "Statement shall conform and shall be placed on the ballot by the governing board of the county," which would be the city council. The difficulty with this particular statute is what might be considered the vagueness of the demand, if you want to call it that, "shall." The, as you may know, there are at least three, I don't know how many for certain, but at least three different resolutions that the school boards can just send over to the supervisor, use the, send over to the supervisor of elections and it goes on the ballot. The question is, this one's different. It does require the city council vote. Now, the difficulty is, what does it mean, "I shall be placed on the ballot?" The attorney general has looked at this particular statute and this particular question. And what the attorney general said was that the county commission, let's put it this way, he starts with saying, "Well, if it's sent to the county commission, then obviously the county commission has some right, responsibility, duty, whatever that may be, over this particular question, whatever it may be." He narrowed it at that point to the date of the election, saying that at a minimum, the county commission had the authority, discretion, if you want to call it, to determine the date of an election, even if called by, whatever was requested by the school board, the county commission at least had that discretion. The difficulty, and the difficulty with the attorney general's opinion is that it doesn't explain why that's the only authority the county commission would have. It clearly goes to the county commission. It doesn't say what the limits of the power of the county commission are. He simply said, "Well, I'm going to limit it to the date." Now, he wasn't asked the question, for example, there's a question as to whether to have this, a mail ballot, for example. Again, he doesn't look into the question of whether the county commission can choose between a mail ballot and a, just a normal, go-to-the-ballot-box ballot. The statute, by the way, for mail ballot, ten, I believe, says that it has to be the county commission that creates a mail ballot in the first place. I don't know that anybody else can call a mail ballot. So that would then add to the county commission, the city council's discretion. Now, the difficulty is, what other limits or authority does the city council have in reviewing a ballot? There's nothing in the statute which helps us, helps analyze what limits there are to the city council authority. The city council is a legislative body. It only has one authority, and that is to adopt legislation. It's not an administrative agency. It can either draft and adopt a resolution or an ordinance. To put something on the ballot requires an ordinance. So this is a legislative matter. In looking at the way courts have analyzed, at this point, let me go to this, assuming the council were to choose to exercise, might be the greatest discretion, would you be not to put it on the ballot? And whether that, that's a, that's a more complicated one. It is my view that despite the "shall," and the courts have looked at this as well, and said, "Sometimes 'shall' means 'may,' or it's directory. It's essentially saying, who's going to do it?" And while I didn't write it this way, it would be sort of like looking at the statute this way. Does the statute say, and I'll use city council, although it says county commission, does the statute say the city council shall place on the ballot exactly when, where, and how the school board wants it to be? Or does it say, "The city council shall be the governing body or the, excuse me, governmental agency that puts it on the ballot?" It, the statute doesn't actually say either one. We know for sure, at least the attorney general believes, that the first one, which is, "Shall put it on, when and on the ballot exactly how the school board wants," isn't the correct interpretation of "shall." The question is, what is? My view is that the better answer is, although it admittedly is a close call, given the language, that the council has the discretion not to put it on the ballot. In part, this is due to the idea that this is within the Section 212.055 of the Florida statutes. There are nine sales taxes, sales surtaxes. As you can guess, they are interrelated in the sense that, well, one, no county can adopt all nine. That's not, it's a statutory prohibition on that. On the other hand, it is clear that adopting one sales surtax impacts politically, if not otherwise, not legally, the next sales surtax. As you know, there was a pension sales surtax that was adopted a couple of years ago. I believe it was 2017. I don't remember exactly. The question would be raised whether the city council would have been able to politically get that adopted, had the school board adopted a sales surtax the year before. There is a, because there's this, now the sales surtax is, I think we're at seven, but I'm not sure. This would make it go to seven and a half. The question is whether there would be availability to go to eight. Now, the council would be thinking, "Well, we've already got seven and a half. We don't go to eight. We don't want to go to eight." Legally, we could, but politically, we don't want to. So because this is in the sales surtax and because of the impact of the sales surtax on the government, it is at least conceivable the board's discretion is letting the city council make this choice. The, unfortunately, the statute isn't clear. The other, if I didn't, I want to return to the idea that there has, the court would conclude, there has to be a reason that the county commission, the city council has adopted. The legislature has given you the authority to put certain things on the ballot. No question's asked, right to the supervisor. So the question has to be asked, why put the city council in there? And that's really where I, I probably drew the line with having said, "You can have full authority to put something on the ballot," and I believe most of them relate to superintendent-electe, not-elected, size of the boards and stuff like that. But it is clearly your authority to do that. City council could not be involved. Having given you what the authority to do something directly, the question is, why the city council? And I did the best I could to guess. We know it means some discretion. The next step is, let's assume for a moment that the city council and, and this is where politics comes in, I'll assume that the city council, let's just assume, and this is what we had, we were asked to do, assume that the city council chose not to put something on the ballot. And what's the response? Well, there is, there are two different kinds of lawsuits that could be brought. One would be a request for a mandamus, petition for writ of mandamus. And a mandamus sounds very much like what it is, very much like what it sounded like. It's a mandate, and it's a command that you do what you must do, that you have no discretion to avoid doing. Well, I don't think that would qualify, because there's certainly discretion as to, let's take an easy one, a, a special election. There's certainly no mandate in the, in the, in Chapter 212, Section 212.0556, this particular section, that says, "There must be a special election." Clearly, that's not required. There are statutes that do require special elections. The charter requires special elections in certain instances, but clearly, this is a discretionary matter, special election or not special election. The court, the city council certainly has that discretion. The attorney general has indicated there's a discretion as to what ballot to put it on, to put it on. Well, at this point, we have the discretion of at least a minimum of what I would call three major kinds of election topics. One would be special election. One would be a general election. And another would be the local government, city of Jacksonville election, or the consolidated government. And each one has its, shall we say, reasons for and against. Is it better to have a, I mean, this is, this is not, I don't have an answer for that. Is it better, whatever better means, to have a special election? Is it better to have a mail election? I forgot that one. Is, is it, I mean, a special election means it's all by itself. Is that good or bad? That's not for me to decide. That's a, that's very much a political question. And that would be, and what I'm getting at, is that would be a court saying, "That's a political question. Good or bad for a special election?" Court, there's certainly no duty to use a special election. At this point, there's no duty to use a general election. General election has the positive that it's the governor or the president, maybe more people are doing it. But even there, there's the primary general election, and then there's the final general election. Then, the last one would be, well, everything related to the governance of the city of Jacksonville is on one election. It's, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to describe it, was this year. And the next one, of course, is until 2023. But the idea is, if you're going to do a countywide sales tax, sales surtax, perhaps it's best for it to be on a consolidated government election. Again, these are all political, I say political, policy, I really mean by policy choices. Good or bad, I don't, I couldn't possibly tell you which one was good or bad, nor could a court call one of those good or bad. The difficulty would be, in a mandamus, that all of these discretionary policy decisions are not, none of them are mandated. There's no, "You must do this. You must, this is a better choice." Going to the discretion of the city council, the attorney general, as I said, has at a minimum suggested discretion as to which election. The choice of which election, there have been cases regarding choices of elections, the, there was a, there are a variety of put-things-on-the-ballot provisions around the country and around the state. One of them, a common one, is a special election called, and you have between 30 and 90 days to call the election or something like that. It's a very specific and narrow sense of discretion. You have 30 to 90 days. This one certainly doesn't have that. But even with the 30 to 90-day kind of discretion, the courts have said, they won't overturn an exercise of discretion unless it's a gross abuse of discretion. It would be very difficult to describe choosing a general election as a gross abuse of discretion. There's many good policy reasons for a general election. There's many good policy reasons for a special election. Again, that's not my call. But would it be abuse of discretion to choose one versus the other? I can't believe a court would do so. So my conclusion is that the council has, at a minimum, the discretion to choose the election. I believe that if the council chose not to have an election at all, there is another series of cases relating to both discretion and legislative bodies, where the courts have said numerous times that it is not our job, and we will not tell a legislative body to enact or not enact legislation. That particular standard of law, and that does apply, even the mid-state Supreme Court applied that to local governments more than 100 years ago in the 1890s, that we, the courts, will not order a legislative body to adopt legislation. It's not our job. There are cases where it was clear that, not in these other states, but a state constitu, actually in Florida as well, there are state constit, there are a couple of state constitutional provisions actually related to schools, about what kind of schools we have to have. Y'all may get familiar with some of the lawsuits just this year. The Florida Supreme Court effectively said, "Despite the constitutional command to adopt legislation, we will not order the legislature to do so." It's a policy call. I think that in the cases where there, and there have been cases, and I note that there have been cases where elections have been ordered, and indeed, there is one in the Fourth Circuit. What wasn't done in those cases is a review of whether the court would violate separation of powers, and I know this is very esoteric, would it be invading the province of the legislature to order the legislative body to do so? That's a powerfully important part of our governmental system, and we, I believe that the correct answer should be that even with the command, that it's not up to the courts to order it to be done, and there's actually a site, I believe there's a couple quotations from various courts. I think one is actually in Florida as well. Let's say, when a legislative body is ordered to do something, it's up to the voters and the politics, the policy, to respond for them, not to the courts. So this was a, so that's the conclusion I've gotten. The phrase, or some undeniable, the council has the discretion to choose an election. Arguably, it has the discretion not to have an election at all. And I certainly think it's the better answer that a court should not order a legislative body to adopt legislation any more than they should order you to adopt any particular policy when you adopt policies for the school. And I'm sure, I'm guessing you may have some questions, and you're patient, and it's great. We appreciate it.
If I could just take a question, just a second, because I'm a real bottom-line, just that a simply kind of person, so on the paper, I think that we have before us, the question that was asked was whether the council has legislative discretion regarding whether to place the sales surtax referendum on the ballot. The answer was, the council has legislative discretion regarding whether and when to place the sales surtax referendum on the ballot. The second question, whether a court has the power to order the council to place the sales surtax referendum on the ballot. The answer is, a court does not have the power to order the council to place the surtax referendum on the ballot. So that being said, just a simple takeaway is, is that we can pass a resolution, send it to the city council, and the city council, according to this, this response, can decide whether and when to place it on the ballot. They could say, "It's not going to be on the ballot," or they're going to change the date of the election.
Yes.
And so sending, making, passing this resolution and sending it over with a preferred date, then begins the conversation of, they could come back and change it to the general election for 2020, and then that was what we would go with.
Yes, and I think the way you put it quite, and it's consistent with the courts and the attorney general said. It begins the conversation. It's the political conversation, of course, but yes, the conversation with the city council as to what is the best process.
Okay. Do you have a question or comment? Anyone else? So, thank you. And appreciate the detailed explanation. I think in practical terms, the summation of the question is important, as well as, I cannot imagine that this body wants to begin that conversation in any kind of adversarial posture, right? So I think that it's important that we understand our position as a board, and our authority as a board, and our constitutional duty as a board, as well as the like for the council members and the mayor. And I think that we have to have those conversations and understand where council members are individually as we approach this particular referendum, that it's, it's really important that we start this as a partnership. I think that had been the conversation all the way along, in terms of having the meeting with council that happened at the end of March. It's how we have worked together well in the past around the partnership to plant trees at all of our schools, around partnerships, and infrastructure, and other opportunities that overlap our jurisdictions, which this certainly is one. So, you know, with that, I think that it does warrant some conversation about the date of election seems to be one particular point of topic, and that we really reconcile, where do we want to start that conversation, and how do we want to start that conversation? And I think that it's important, and I'm going to ask through the chair to Ms. Miller, could you update us on the legislation that's been referenced quite a bit in the conversation regarding referendum, as to the authority of boards, the timing, the necessary vote?
Sure. So the legislative session wrapped up at 1:00, 2:03 Saturday afternoon. House Bill 5 was filed and passed, an amendment, that bill amends the statute 212.055. And specifically, subsection 10 says that it, that an elec, that the election for a surtax must be held at the general election. The bill is effective 1/1/2020. So that means that all referendums passed, like that we decide to move forward after 1/1/2020 must be at the general election per the statute.
So that, there was some change between the House and the Senate?
Yes.
And they came together, and it's a 50%, versus at one point, there was a conversation about being two-thirds.
That's correct.
So the ideal of a general election was in both the House and the Senate throughout this legislative session. The difference between the two was that the House was pushing for a two-thirds vote to, for passage. The Senate was 50%, but they came back with 50%.
Yes.
Was what, was what was decided.
Yes.
And that it would have to be held at a general election going forward, effective January 1, 2020.
Correct. And the, if I may say, the temperature in Tallahassee for that kind of move is likely. So it's
You mean for a two-thirds?
For a two-thirds. And with an early session, early session beginning in January 2020, which could end early March, that potentially judicial legislation could be passed.
Thank you. And so, and I think those are the two important points that we've talked about, is the timing of the election and the percentage of the votes, a majority versus supermajority. And what would be the next general election?
Oh, the next regularly scheduled election is the presidential primary in March, but the next general election is in November.
Okay. Right. So, were we to, and now, through the chair, I believe, to Ms. Chastain or Mr. Durden, however is the appropriate person, but were we to engage in conversation with the council regarding the timing of the election, given that that is the one place where there's been clear evidence of their discretion? If the resolution were to be passed by this board and passed by ordinance, so including the mayor's either signature or anything, could we time it such that it would align to the presidential primary under the current legislation? So if the referendum is placed on the ballot prior to 2020, does that still apply? When does that general election requirement kick in according to our timeline?
Well, I haven't, as you might guess, I haven't seen the statute yet, because it just passed on Saturday. I was aware of it. Karen showed me some version of it. I haven't seen the final wording. I felt like, what I, what I, based on a glance, it looks like it might require the general election if it goes into 2020, that the presidential primary would work. But before, I don't want to include that without, without reading the entire statute all the way through, with that being a focus of quite, of some significance for you and even the, and the city council, like, what does this really mean? Can we do this? I hesitate to give you that answer today. On first glance, it looks like this applies to a referendum that occurs after the effective date, which of course would be, if you set it in, in 2020, that would occur after the effective date, date of 20, of January 1, 2020. But I do want to look at it to be certain. I would, sometimes legislation is such that if it was already called, they let you go forward. But I, but I don't have a good answer. I don't have an answer I'm comfortable with at this point. I can tell you the likely answer is, based on the glance at it, that it's likely to be required to be in November, but I will look to see if I still feel that way after the reading.
See the final?
See the fi, I want to see the final, as you can tell from my other conversation, every word matters.
Yes. Yeah. No, and I would like to ask that we get some clarity on that, because I think it's important to the conversations moving forward as to what our options are and what the opportunity is to get this done. I know the need is now, but I just, I want to make sure, because we had those conversations with council, that, with city council, let me be clear, that, that we understand what the new legislation offers in terms of opportunity, and that we're following alongside that.
So, I have a question. So if we go with our preferred date, which is the fall, November of 2019, and the council says, "No, this is what's been voted on in Tallahassee. We're going to follow even though you want to do it now." he wouldn't do it now, we want to move the date to the general election 2020, to align with legislation, let's just say that, does that come back to us, or is that just the change that they make? I mean, is there any conversation, or do they just change the date, say, okay, we'll put it on the ballot, but it's whatever date in November 2020? How does that, how does that change work?
All right. So, it would be, I think the correct use, the correct word for all of this is conversation, preferably the conversation is such that the board and the council, or members, council members, et cetera, have appropriate conversation, whether there's, in theory, let's put it this way, one approach would be, that the council just changes it, to make it simple, November 2020, y'all decide that's not, for whatever reason, y'all don't want that, you just send the resolution back, so you don't want it on the ballot, we do it that way. I think that's at least a possibility. I think the other, if you're going to have a conversation, which I think, and by the way, that's interesting, how both courts and the attorney general talk about conversations between boards and these kinds of matters, the, perhaps a better approach would be to ask, if you see it going in that direction, generally, if you're not familiar with the way the city council works, just real briefly, the residents would be introduced to the council, it would go, after about three weeks, it would go to a committee. It's unlikely that the council would change the date of the election without it first being done by a committee, it could, in theory, could be done, but if a committee voted to change the election, it may be that you then, the superintendent, because y'all might not be able to meet in time, could send a note to the council, or go talk to the council, say, hey, can you give us, can you give us three weeks to have our next board meeting and discuss the general election and our approach to that, would we want that? In other words, the appropriate conversation would be to invite, either invite you to meet again on that date, or if you ask for permission, or ask for time to discuss that date. Again, appropriate working together to come up with something. If they, I think, I do believe they have the authority to just simply change it, but I do believe that the appropriate, very nice, a very good response, particularly, particularly with the consolidation of governments, for them to either ask your opinion on it, just so they've got it officially from the board, of course, or for you to ask for input on that, and y'all may have a conversation at this board meeting coming up, or the next board meeting, you'll certainly have at least one, y'all meet monthly, I believe, certainly have at least one more board meeting before the council could do anything, they're certainly not going to adopt it on an emergency basis, because there we could, but I can't imagine that. So, they hardly could call a special meeting. Or y'all could call a special meeting. But the idea is that if it looks like, and y'all can find this out in many ways, it could be individually, or spoken, you've spoken to a number of council members, they're looking, it's looking like you think that it's going to be, that it's going to be a request or a change to November 2020, then call a special meeting and go ahead and meet and discuss that, what that means to you guys. I do think it's important for the council, and that's what the cases have been saying, that the council understand what y'all are trying to achieve, and why you're trying to achieve it. So, I know that's a long-winded answer to yes, the simple answer is yes, they can probably change it, and also, it makes more sense to have the dialogue.
Follow, yeah, through the chair, Mr. Darden. Speaking to that, I know, is there a possibility that it wouldn't make it out of committee?
Certainly, well, any, yes, in theory, I shouldn't say that, any piece of legislation can be stuck in committee, that's correct. It doesn't happen very often, but, and for what it's worth, if it's stuck in committee, the council president can ask that it be pulled from the committee, there are ways to get it out of committee, even if it's quote "stuck in committee." One thing that is slightly different between the city council and the state legislature is that there's no death by committee, nothing dies unless it's actually killed by the council. I mean, there's, there are things that have been on the council agenda for two, three years, and that certainly can't happen in the state legislature. As you may know, if the state legislature, at the end of legislative session, I believe this is correct, if anything doesn't get out of committee, it's dead and has to be reintroduced. That's not what happens at the city council, it stays there. And there would be, again, conversations to, we've had, we've had circumstances where a committee has four members that don't really think like the rest of the 19, and they've either tried to keep something in committee, or they voted one way, and the other 15 completely reversed them when they got to the council floor. So again, the political conversation would be to, in the appropriate way, of course, everybody remembering the sunshine law, to ask the council to pull it from committee, or ask to meet with the committee, or, you know, there are ways to get it out of committee. But yes, and it, something can stay in committee, but I would highly recommend that if something is in the committee for a long enough period of time, that y'all do the appropriate political conversations, with the appropriate people, say, at least get it out of committee, let's get a vote, please, you know, however that's, I mean, again, appropriate action.
Well, one thing you said previously was for the council to know what our intent was, or our reason was, and I think this is a good time to have that conversation, because we can get hung up on a date, that could be, and we have a preferred date, but that date could change, but I think the question before us, we shouldn't get so hung up on the date as, what is the intent and what is the goal? And it's my perception, from conversation that this board has had around this table, that the goal is to address our infrastructure, and the need to improve our infrastructure, and also, more importantly, a need for the community to weigh in on that decision, that this is not a decision that we just executively make and say, this is what it's going to be. And so, if that is where we want to end, you know, do we want to, I guess I'm asking, is that the message we want to send to the city council? Our goal is to have our community have a conversation, and to weigh in and vote on this, or is our goal to have a specific date? Does that make sense? I mean, I think that that's the thing we have to kind of decide. If our goal is to improve our infrastructure, to improve, help improve education in Duval County, and our goal is for the community to weigh in, then that certainly leaves some openness for conversation, if there was a different will of the city council. But for me, anyway, having the community weigh in is an important thing, so making it to the ballot, even though we have a preferred date on here, I think that's a conversation we need to have, and see if there's agreement on that.
Well, what would be the disadvantage of waiting to pass a resolution until we have a master plan that we voted on? If it's going to go to the city council anyway, I think it would serve this board better. I think that if we have a plan in place, that we have community buy-in, that everybody's agreed upon, and we voted upon, and then we ask the city council to consider it. I think, you know, you don't want to put the cart before the horse, but you really do want to make sure that you're not rushing it, and that everyone has an opportunity to have their say, and then once we get the master plan worked out, and we voted on it, then we ask the city council for a resolution.
I know we had this conversation last workshop, but I think it's, we will have a plan before the voters are able to weigh in on this, so it's all part of the continuum and timing, I just want to be careful that we don't, that while that plan may not be whole, the summation of it is there, but not wholly completed by the time the council votes, that the council vote is simply, as Ms. Hershey has articulated, to give the, our constituency, the community, the opportunity to weigh in on our school infrastructure. And so the plan will certainly be before the public, long before the November vote. So, to me, that timeline allows for communication and understanding of what the plan is, but also the flexibility that is within the resolution. Were there to be some instance that happened, a hurricane or otherwise, that caused us to need to shift the investment of those funds, and I think we have to be careful to allow the flexibility that the referendum, or that the resolution has, because of those things that we may not foresee. So I want to be careful not to couple those things so tightly, that people know what our intent is, but also understand that we will continue to respond to what are our most immediate needs. I think, and when I say we, I mean those beyond me, right? Because I won't be here to see most implementation, at least here in this seat. But I, the other question that I had in relation to Ms. Joyce's question was, and we may not have this number today, but I would like to know, through the chair to, hi, superintendent.
She was at a previous meeting, by the way.
Yes, yes, yes. To the superintendent, and probably to Mr. Nelson, and I don't expect that we have these numbers now, but what would be the potential cost to us of waiting essentially a year, and continuing to have to supplement our current infrastructure, that's not the right term, but continue to have to sort of cobble together our current infrastructure for an additional year? I have to imagine that we would be making investments in maintenance to buildings that are slated in that plan to, you know, no longer serve our students. And so, I'd just be curious, I don't expect you to have that number today, but I think it's an important number for us to know.
I think it's, aren't we spending a half million dollars a month?
Close to a half million dollars a month, I would.
So, a half million tons.
Me, now, it's about six million dollars.
Is the difference.
First of all, I would like to say I appreciate these comments, because I think that this is very much a reflection of why I'm hearing out of the community, however, that being said. I think it's important not to get too tied up, as the superintendent has reminded us in the past, the facilities master plan is something, is an ongoing process, that of course, we'll continue to have a conversation about, but this is a long-term plan. What I don't want to get too far from is the billion dollars in backlog and repairs that we will face if we do nothing. So, the facilities master plan is a separate issue from one that's already deteriorating in our buildings right now. So if we do, if we don't have additional capital outlay dollars, then not only does the master plan not happen, we continue to struggle to maintain the facilities that we do have. I had asked Ms. Bailey, through the chair, and the superintendent, if she could give us some information about kind of the historical capital outlay distribution, and what that has looked like, where we're falling with meeting our needs. Through the chair, to the superintendent.
Through the chair, hold on a minute, I think you had asked me about...
Can you pick up? I know, you can talk out of the chat. Really, your mom voice.
Well, I think Ms. Anderson had asked me over the weekend about the capital outlay funding for charter schools.
Sure.
Okay. But I can give you a historical about the district currently, with the 1.5 levy, we generate just under 100 million, it's about 92 million dollars.
Okay. And that's been pretty consistent?
Well, no, that has been changing over the years, back in 2007, the millage levy was around 2.0, then it also dropped to 1.75, and then it also dropped to 1.5. And so, as the property values decrease, will be generated, and levy also decreases also. And so, there's a combination in the past, where not only did the millage rate decrease, but the property values also decreased also. And so, that was part of the reason for the limited funding for capital, for the district.
So do you have any historical information about, what I keep hearing of is that this is a conversation that the board has had for a long time, that there's been a need for upgrades, and even when you hear community chatter, you know, the idea is, this hasn't happened overnight. We didn't just wake up one day and have people in the school buildings in the state of Florida. So, I'm wondering, what has been the problem over the last several years, and I would imagine that constituents and many people, voters, are also wondering that? So, what, can you help us understand what has happened?
Can I, can I answer that, part of that question? I think part of the, why haven't we had this conversation before, is you can see it's very difficult, and it, you, we are an elected body, and these conversations are hard to have, and I think it takes some will, and some, some ability to be a risk taker, if you will, to go out on that limb, and I think that sometimes as a body, that can be a little scary or a little challenging. So I think why maybe before, is that these are hard conversations to have, and I think that other boards have had that. I'd also like to just kind of circle back around for just a second, and to some things we remember, Joyce asked, and there's also, we have part of that timeline that we remember Smith-Forrest referred to, which is the apogee, which is, and that takes six months. So there's all that timeline, Dr. Green?
I want to piggyback on part of your answer. Back in 2008, or 2007, 2008, the state took 0.5 mils away from our capital outlay, which in the past, it was two mils, and then it went down to 1.5. And in addition, PICO dollars has continued to dwindle from the school district, and more moved towards charter school support. So, plus, the issue of the utilization for many schools continue to be underutilized, I shouldn't say many schools, schools in certain communities are underutilized, and you still have to take care of those facilities. You can't allow those facilities to, you know, just because they're underutilized, to say, well, they don't really, we can take our time and fix it.
Same problems last month.
Yes, same problem, more problems, because they are continuing to get older. They're not, so, and I did send you all an email that I, I had four meetings all at my time, so I apologize for being tardy, but as I've shared with everyone, we are at a critical juncture. This is bigger than the facilities master plan, this is bigger than certain communities might not like that particular plan. This is, if we do nothing, if we push this down, that 1.9 billion that we've stated is what would get our schools at least to 21% of our schools being newer builds, reducing the age, the average age of our facilities from 44 years down to 31 years. All that does is you keep adding more cost onto that, the longer we delay, because, once again, we're not going to allow a school to be at a state that we can't have children in that building. So, a school that we may be considering for consolidating, and if we wait another year, sometime between now and then, its AC goes out, we're going to spend the millions to go fix that AC. And so, that's, that's a cause that I'm not sure we could say, well, here it is, because what we do today, and I say we, it's more we in Don's group, is they, they just go fix stuff. Very little is being proactively done, very little is being done for, oh, this is the year I'm getting new carpet. Probably not, even though you're on the list to get new carpet, because we had a flood at one of our elementary schools this year, and everybody who was slated to get carpet just got pushed back, because we had to go make sure we don't have mold in that school, do all the things to ensure that we could put that media center back into function for the children, so we just, we just pull from other, it's the old adage, rob Peter to pay... So we just, we just pull from other, it's the old adage, rob Peter to pay Paul.
I guess, you know, as I'm, and I'm hearing you tell us a story, which is, you know, a story that we keep hearing, but I appreciate it. No, I don't mean to say don't, don't continue sharing, because that's a story we need to hear over and over again. I can't help but think about doing more with less. And if our dollars continue to roll back, and we don't have the funding from the legislature, the legislators, and the distribution of funds are being shifted to a place that's inequitable for the thousands of schools that we have in the state of Florida, I don't know how we will be able to keep up with our facilities needs at the district without cutting program. And it's going, I mean, it's already been something that's clearly had to happen. And I for one, don't see the point in kicking the can down the street. I think that that has happened. I think that's why people are saying we didn't get the oldest facilities overnight. Perhaps tough conversations were a barrier. That's not something I'm afraid to do. I can have a tough conversation, and I can talk to our council members, because this isn't, this isn't something that we just want to take because money. We don't get done taking care of children, the work that needs to be done without dollars in some ways, so.
But I think it's also very important that we understand that we, we're not the only people that are going to be voting on this. And we have to have buy-in. We have to have buy-in from the city council. We have to have buy-in from the vendors in Duval County. We have to have buy-in from the mayor. We have to have buy-in from our constituents. And so, you know, I'm just in a position where I feel like if we continue to move forward and we rush this, that we're not going to end up getting what we want. I worked in a facility as early as this year that needs, they has great repair, that heater would come on in the summertime and the school would flood. So I understand that we need to address our facilities. But I also, I just want to walk forward with caution that if, you know, just because we believe that, that doesn't mean everybody else believes it. And it's not us that get to vote on it, it's the taxpayers.
I, I hear that, but I think it's our responsibility to make sure that they understand.
And all I'm saying.
And I'm willing to take, to take on the role of educating, right? Of letting the citizens know, just like we just came off the campaign trail, right?
Absolutely.
When we had to let people know what we stood for and what we were all about, and that was a process of education.
Absolutely.
And there is not, there's a need, you know, there is not any shortage of need here. And so I think it's a matter of letting people know what is, what is the truth about how we're going to be able to move our school system forward, taking some responsibility as, as a board member to say, I'm going to do my part, and I invite you to have your voice heard too.
I appreciate both points. I think it's, it's important that we have a balance, because at the end of the day, it's about bringing people along in this process. And we, I believe we have one shot at getting this done. If it doesn't happen there, then it gets pushed way down the line. And I think that it's sort of a both end. It's a, yeah, we need to make sure that we're bringing people along, educating them, but also assessing, now that we've put it out, the people have reacted to it, and now they're giving us their feedback, based on the feedback and based on us making sure they're educated, is this, where, where does that now put us with making sure that we can get them on board? Because I know that I'm a big advocate for this, because if you looked at the facilities plan, almost half the money is for mine and Board Member Jones' area. And there's a reason why that is, and we can talk about the history of where that comes from and, and why we've been, those districts have been disenfranchised for so long. Something has to happen, but we also want to make sure if it does go to vote, it'll pass. So I think we need to work with our communications folks, and I'm glad we have all, getting all this information. And I think now we just have to make the decision on where does, where does that put us, based on the studies that we have to do, which election is going to fall and that kind of thing? But I, I think it's, this is the right conversation, and, and the chair is absolutely right. It takes political courage to actually stand and actually have these conversations, because something's going to have to give, someone, something's going to have to happen in these, in these conversations.
Well, I want to back up back to sort of the comment by council that suggested, you know, having conversation and deciding, sending a message to city council of where we are and what we want. And if what we want is for the voters to be able to weigh in, and for us to have a community conversation about what the future of public education looks like in Duval County, then we are sending them our recommended date. If, if the only thing they do is move the date, then are we still getting what we want? You know, or if it's going to a vote and if it's, oh, we wanted to have it in November, but it's going to be a year later, it, to me, this is our preferred date, but the conversations should still continue. And if all they do is change the date, then are we still going in the direction we want to go? I guess is the, is really the question that, that we have to answer, is that, because this, what's our intent? What's our message?
That's reminding me of a question that I wanted to post to the superintendent in our last workshop, but I didn't, the conversation got along. So I would like to go back and ask, if you don't mind, why we're at a place of talking about this sales tax referendum versus any other stream of revenue? Why? So I keep hearing around, right? Why not impact fees? And so I just think that there is an opportunity to have a little bit of education about why this is the particular piece of funding that's being recommended, recommended at this point.
We've talked about impact fees, but you will certainly mention that or allow Mr. Nelson to say that.
Through the chair, to Board Member Anderson and the board. When we look at additional revenue to support capital needs, you have the option of impact fees, a half-cent sales tax, or what you currently have is concurrency, which you've received zero dollars, since you've implemented concurrency. Impact fees can only be used for growth. It can only be used when the district can show that this, this particular facility is overcapacity, or this particular area is overcapacity. Therefore, we are going to use impact fees to pay for, whether it's an additional wing or paid for a new school.
Do we get to decide impact fees?
No, you, you must first have an impact fee study. So you would have to hire an outside firm to come and perform an impact fee study. Then that study does have to, just like has to, we have, you have to vote on it and make, it'll tell you what they feel are the fees and, and this whole nexus thing, and I don't really want to get into that, because I just know enough to be dangerous about what you're talking about and that. And then it does, that still goes to the city council. That will go to the city council, and they, they also.
So the council would be the ones to impose the fee?
Yes.
Does it go out to the voter?
No, the council would be the one who would impose the fee. And it would be a fee on new development that hasn't already been waived, that grandfathered into this old system, which it's my understanding, almost everything is almost grandfathered. So it would take quite a while to raise enough money to actually be able to do something with it. So again, it can only be used for growth. It would not be able to address anything in District Four, District Five, which their issue is very old facilities. A half-cent sales tax, based on the way our plan is written, it gives the district, the board, the freedom to do everything from maintenance to technology to new construction. It will give the, the district the, the highest dollar revenue, approximately 80 million dollars a year. It will help the district to address the 1.3 billion dollars in backlog of, of, which will happen over the next five years. It will also give the district the ability to address those areas of growth. So if we have growth out west towards Baldwin, growth in the south, growth wherever that is, you now have the flexibility to address that, as well as address the needs of our old facilities that need, either we need to do consolidation, and in that consolidation, we're building a brand-new facility for students.
And we, we choose a sales tax for capital needs over millage?
Millage is for operation, operating dollars. So you choose a half-cent sales tax because it can only be used for capital. I did leave out one other revenue, bonding. However, we are at a point where we have bonded, I think, our maximum rate and, and we really do not have that as an option to even say, oh, well, we'll just deal with the growth and try to build two new schools. We probably do not have the capability of going out to get a bond.
And our, the sales tax will allow us to use that for our debt services as well?
That is correct, for any bonding that.
Related to capital.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rashim, may I add?
Absolutely.
One, it's, it's really not about what Board Member Anderson asked, but here's a piece that we have not talked about, and it's probably because we just don't want to really talk about it. Is, the law is, the legislation has changed now on identifying struggling schools. Those schools now, if you don't have three Cs within the last five years, or make a B within the last two years, you're, you're being identified as, what's the exact term?
Persistent low performing.
Persistently low performing schools. We believe that that legislation is going to lead to more schools of hope, and when I say schools of hope, I really mean charter schools. And that if that takes place, and, and those charter schools are now moving into where our schools that are, would be identified as persistently low performing, and the both of those schools are in District Four and Five, it will continue to dwindle the utilization. And we will be put in the position that we are just closing this school because there's not enough children attending that school, and we will probably go through the ACE process, well, not probably, we'll go through the ACE process, and students will just be dispersed to schools to get to that utilization at a point where now we're just making sure children are in hopefully the least of the oldest of the facilities in District Four and Five.
I have to attend, I just was recently told, I have to attend the state board meeting on May 23rd, and I'm pretty sure I'm going to have to address Northwestern and Lake Forest. And I'm not, I'm not very comfortable about what would be our options, because even if Northwestern makes a C, it still will be identified based on that new definition as persistently low performing. Even if Lake Forest makes a C, it will still be identified because they do not have three Cs within five years. They would both need to be Bs to come out of that new identification, and we really to date do not have what are the, the consequences for the schools. But we're talking about Lake Forest and, and Northwestern. We have other schools. They might have two Cs in the last five years, but they don't have three. And what happens if they don't make a C this year? And you ask yourself, well, how is that related to what we're talking about? It's related because we need to be proactive about, encourage, I believe our traditional schools have the right resources. I believe that they, we've been working with them this year, that they can, that they can turn this around and move forward, but they still struggle with, one, they don't get the same level of art and music as, as our larger schools receive, and, and that was done to sort of equalize or level the playing field for all schools. You'd have a large school that would have one music teacher, and a very tiny school with only one music teacher, so they went to itinerants. By moving this plan forward, we can ensure those schools, we're trying, should not have itinerants. Itinerants cannot truly invest themselves in a school and provide the same level of rich arts programs as if you were that person at the school all the time.
So it sounds like you're talking about, but that's operational costs. So how does increasing our capital dollars affect our ability to move our operational dollars?
Because we would be reducing our overhead operational dollars, not the dollars to our classrooms, because teachers still follow the students. But if you have two schools coming together, then you don't have two principals, you don't have two assistants, you reduce that overhead cost to then come back and invest into our classrooms. Now, instead of two itinerants that may see those schools once, you know, I'm hearing stories that I only see my children once per nine weeks. Imagine only having music one time the whole entire nine weeks, and, and, you know, I'm hearing that, but I, that's not the type of education that we should be offering any student. Whereas other schools, they're at least seeing their, their teacher on a rotation. I'll, okay, I see them once every six days versus I only see them once per nine weeks. So it has the ability to impact operational costs, because we would be providing a new school for students that deserve a new school, and then reducing our overhead to then support teachers who deserve that level of support.
So with the capital dollars, we can reduce expense and spending enough that we'll have more flexibility for our operational dollars. So we can look at being able to take care of our arts program, we can look at being able to take care of our teachers, and making sure that they're getting the support that they need through this.
We would be better. We would be better. I don't want to, I don't want to.
Sure, listen, we're not.
Listen, I don't want people to.
Wait, just a minute.
I'm sorry. I just didn't want, I just wanted to clarify.
Board Member Grimes was next. Go ahead.
So this is, maybe it's not, when we first started this conversation, we talked about our teachers, and we talked about teacher pay. And I think at one point we talked about we could do both, but there hasn't been any conversation about that. And I think it is, it's important for many reasons. I mean, obviously the buildings are important, but unless we have good teachers that we can count on, where are we on that?
We, we are in the beginning stages. I know Ms. Young has met with Ms. Brady and said, asked, well, threw them together and said, let's see if we can create this plan and figure out how we can then fund it. In reality, you need two taxes. You need a millage increase and you need a half-cent sales tax increase. Though I know that sounds taboo here, that we, we, Duval does not like to raise taxes, but this is how I see it, Ms. Grimes. This board, in my working with you all for the last 10 months, feel like you are primed and bold enough to say, we're going to fight for 14,000 employees, and, which includes our facilities, the 130,000 students we serve, we have to fight for them. And because the facilities was already started when I arrived, that's what I picked up and said, okay, well, it's already started, so let's move it. The master plan starts that conversation about moving a half-cent sales tax. Did I know I also needed to deal with the teacher, not just teachers, employee pay? Yes, which would then lead to the conversation.
Okay.
You, you, you not only have employee issues, but we have safety and security issues that will continue to arise. We have the arts, we, we have a number of things that we truly would take our school district to the, it's not nice to have, but these are things we have to have to be a high-performing school district, and to be a high-performing urban school district. We really need to stop comparing ourselves to St. John's, because it's like comparing a cantaloupe to a lemon. comparing a cantaloupe to a lemon. Other than they're both, I think, fruit, that's where the whole comparison stops, in that we have a very diverse demographic. We have much higher poverty rate, and our teachers have to truly come with a set of skills that allows them to be successful in this environment. And I truly believe those sets of skills deserve, come with a, should be financial improvement, as well as when they want to come, they want to come to a place that they feel like unvalued. And when you look at some of our schools in District Four and Five, I can't tell you that I value you because that's where you go to work every day. Ms. Anderson and I went to Chet's Creek. I sat in the parking lot, and I know this sounds very preachy, but I was filled with emotion that this is a beautiful school, and it isn't. We're 20 years old. Because I had just left another school that was 76 years old, and it really didn't look. And so if I was a teacher, I'm going to Chet's Creek. They'll hire me because I might love, want to do, but I'm not going, because every day, every day, that's where I spend the bulk of my day. And you want to be somewhere where you feel that I'm proud to be here. And I no doubt our teachers in our District Four and District Five schools, and even in Ms. Smith-Worris' district, she has some really old schools, are very proud to be there, but doesn't all of our children deserve a Chet's Creek school?
But, but my concern, I mean, why are we not doing both of them? I mean, why? Because honestly.
We're being.
I mean.
We're being attacked on one.
Well, I understand it, but when you.
There's a weird legislation happening too this session that I think can be a little bit challenging to pick up the village reason. I don't, I don't know if that's relevant to this particular conversation, but I know that that has been something I've watched closely as it's moved through because that would have made the village less appealing.
But at some point, I mean, and I know, I know you certainly are supporting teachers and all, but it just, it, I don't know, I wish that we could do both. And, and I think that our constituency could understand, gosh, anybody who knows a teacher certainly knows that it's a job that most people don't want, and, you know, the shortage, everything that we've got, and I feel like we really need to let our, it is not just teachers, you're right, to let all of the people who make it happen every day do something for them that we know that we really, really appreciate them.
Would that come under a separate resolution, or is that something that you put into one resolution?
And I'm going to ask for backup, but I believe it has to be separate because you're talking about two revenue sources, two different types of revenue sources. One is a half-cent sales tax, the other is a millage which is really tied to property taxes.
To the chair, I haven't seen that in mind, but I think it would be separate because it's two different ballot questions.
So that is something, from what I'm hearing, that you said that after we get through this, that's something that could be addressed, and who knows what the council's reaction might be if the, if the preferred vote date was different, and they, they could potentially both be on the ballot at the same time if we had to wait a year. That can be a conversation that we could have for a different resolution. Is that what I'm hearing that we could do?
If you're, if you're so bold, you can have one in May and one in June.
Okay, Board Member Joyce?
So I appreciate the passion that I'm hearing at the table, and especially Dr. Green, thank you for, you know, everything that you've said, and I agree, I agree with everything that Dr. Green has said, but I want to just reiterate that we're not talking about taking it off the table. We're just talking about postponing it so that we can make sure that we have had good conversation with our council members, with our donors, with our mayor, that they understand what we need, because I really, you know, and even having conversation with, you know, my stakeholders, that there are a lot of questions that are still out there. And Board Member Grimes, you addressed some of those issues with teacher pay and funding, fully funding our schools, making sure that we have the support services we need. So all of these things, I just think that we want, if we just vote for a resolution tomorrow and we haven't addressed these issues, it doesn't serve this board very well. And that, the reason why we brought it last month is because of the legislation that was in Tallahassee with the two-third vote. That's why we were having this conversation now. And I just, you know, I feel like it would be in our best interest to continue having those conversations and not try to rush this through, because we don't have the two-third vote issue anymore.
Conversation doesn't end. The conversation doesn't end, and all we, all of this resolution does is get the ball rolling and the conversation started, a formal conversation with the city council. Based upon this answer, the legislative discretion that the city council has according to office of general counsel is the date of when it would be paid placed on the ballot. Is that, right? It's the date of when it would be placed on the ballot.
The council certainly has that discretion.
Right, it is what's there. So we are, yeah, we are having a preferred date of November, of this November. If they change that to the general election based upon what's been done in Tallahassee, that's fine. Board Member Grimes just brought up another conversation that while we're on this roll, that we could have, and that's another process. So Dr. Green has shared you can't do them both at the same time. I realize that.
Oh, I'm sorry, you can't. You just need two different.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying you gotta do it.
You have two questions.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, but this, the resolution, this process has to start, so we have to do it one at a time. I realize I represent a community that's a little bit different. Dr. Green's shared with me multiple times about going to my schools and going by how they look like prep schools and things. And so my constituents that I have spoken with have been very supportive of the, of this, this plan. So I guess what I'm hearing might be a little bit different because they understand the facilities and things like that. So, you know, this is where we are. This is a conversation about, we're going, this is on the, on the agenda tomorrow night to be voted on. The opportunity today is to have this conversation to give clarity. People can certainly vote however they want, but this is the first step. This only begins the conversation, and that's why I asked the question. If, if our goal is to move it forward and get it on the ballot, if the only thing the city council does is change the date, then aren't we happy with it? You know, is that something, you know, we're, we're happy with? Because if this is something we believe in, and we've got to start the conversation sometime, and that's what this resolution does, is it starts the conversation with the city council.
Yes. Ms. Hershey, I also put in that I would have to leave.
Yes, yes, I know, you've got.
So may I just make one last comment, that the vote tomorrow simply starts the conversation, but it also starts the clock on opaca.
Right.
Which is a requirement that we must have complete. So if it does, tomorrow is pivotal because of the clock for starting the conversation and the clock for starting the opaca review for the district. The last piece that I would like to leave with you is if we don't start the conversation and we allow this to be kicked down the road, it will then become even more challenging to even talk about teachers, because then it's going to be, well, you said you had facility issues. Now you're okay with letting that slide, and now you want, you want, we have two issues. We have facilities issues and we have issues for teachers, our compensation. And this move tomorrow is about starting the conversation that the community has to make the decision whether they want to invest into public education. And they, they deserve an opportunity to at least tell us by having a vote. Even if we lose, they've told us their decision about what they want to do.
So.
And if you want the teacher piece to come right after that, because that also has to go to the council, we can bring it. We'll bring you a resolution for that.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Green?
Yes, ma'am.
So let's just say the board approves the resolution, city council gets it and puts it on the ballot, and it is a special election in November, and it fails, and our voters say we do not support this. Where do we go from there?
You, you pick up, well, after I had a moment of.
Pick ourselves up and we go back. You find out, why didn't they vote for it? You find out, well, maybe we didn't do a good job communicating, and you go back. Other districts have lost on the first go-round. They pick themselves up, re, find out what, why it was voted down, and then go back. And unfortunately, you also have to, if you're going to tell individuals what will happen if we don't do this, then those things have to happen.
So if I say we're going to have to just close schools and just put students where they're the least worse off facility, then those things have to happen. So it's not that it can't, you come back around, or we make the decision, okay, let's look at the resolution for teachers, or you bring it back, both of them. I've done it both ways. I've experienced the pain of both ways, and I just believe that we at least have to go give the voters the opportunity to turn us down.
But at some point, you have to start the conversation. We've had the conversation, this starts the conversation with, with the city council. I'd also like to add, Dr. Green mentioned schools of hope earlier.
It's okay.
She mentioned schools of hope earlier, and since we have new board members who did not live through House Bill 7069 in schools of hope, I would just like to clarify that schools of hope that would go into those schools that were persistently low performing, they can be within a five-mile radius of that school, and they do not have to accept students who attended that school that, that they're placed. So I think that that's important to remember as well. It's not like these, these schools come in and necessarily just embrace the students who are in those schools. Those, those schools can be within a five-mile radius, they don't, which in Jacksonville, five miles may not be in the same community where that school was originally, and it does not, if it was an elementary school, they could, they could make it a K-8, and they don't necessarily, all of those students don't necessarily just get to go there. So it's, it's good to do some research and understanding on what schools of hope is and how that impacts the communities where a school of hope would come in, because it's one thing to kind of hear it, and it's another to understand that legislation. So I'd encourage you to look closely at House Bill 7069 and schools of hope, and I'm sure Ms. Miller, who lived through that with us, can, can tell you in kind of a good outline form that you can understand it versus digging through the hundreds of pages of the legislation. We have a, another, okay, we have another closed session after this. Is there any more conversation on, on the resolution?
I would just say that, you know, part of what I feel like I'm sharing with Board Member Joyce, is not that she doesn't think that this funding is important, but that when, you know, the date that we put in the resolution as it stands now, I feel like this is, it's pressing, that we don't really have a year and a half to wait, and I also have significant concerns about what will happen during the next legislative session. We've been squeaked by at the 13th hour, I think it's, like, the 11th hour, not having certain things in legislation. I just don't feel confident that we'll come back around to that next year, and I just don't know what happened. So we know the need is now. We know that there is an opportunity now, and so that's why I would, I would support and I would encourage my council members to support.
I would just, my final thoughts, I would say, that the urgency with the opaca is because you have to start it now to get it on the November ballot. In my opinion, it's going to be very difficult to get the council to agree for a special election. Number one, Duval County has never held a special election with a mail-in ballot before. So to get them to agree to that is going to be very challenging. We can start this process in two months or in three months, because more than likely, there, it's going to be in 2020, in my opinion. So just, you know, again, not putting the cart before the horse, just going ahead and naturally going through this process, having conversations, getting people to buy in before you pass a resolution, or before you pass a resolution to send it to the city council, I believe is the best interest of the board. Not to say it doesn't need to be done, it does, 100%. I just want to make sure this is successful.
Go ahead.
We don't have the time, and honestly, the, why we are here is because people didn't have the courage to do it. And, and I, and I agree that, I mean, this is just the beginning. So we've got several months to get people educated, and I don't, I don't totally agree that the council will not, that they've got new council members that are being seated. And it is, it's all about information. It's all about partnership. It's all about trying to make sure that people do understand.
The council doesn't have to approve it. They can vote just like anyone else can vote. They just have to allow people.
Right. So I just, I don't think we have the time to wait.
And we do need to start the conversation. If they don't change the date, and if, or if they do change the date, then we, you know, we have to wait. It is what it is, but that, but we don't start the formal conversation with them until we, until there's a resolution. And I know, I have at least had conversations with city council members and other business leaders, and I have attended a lot of SAC and PTA meetings as well, and talked to people. I'm assuming others on the board have done similar things as well, and I, and that's part of the process, yes.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think as we take it to the council, I think it's about three things. One is the date, like that first initial date is maybe a concern for some people. I think also, I think we have to ask ourselves, is the content of the actual resolution, is that in debate with anyone? Because that's also going to be looked at. It's not just, they're going to get the date. They're going to say, what is all entailed in actual the, the resolution? And I, I feel like there's certain things, but I feel like that's in a pretty good place. And the other piece is looking at this, as Dr. Green said, a lot of things have, are changing within the legislation. So looking at this as a more universal plan, like involving all the different parties involved, whether that be the charters and other pieces, making sure that that's accounted for, because that's the questions that we're going to get. So I think those are the three things, the date, the content, and then sort of making sure it's a universal plan. But I, I mean, I think if we push it towards the start of the conversation, we can educate in between, and if they do push back, I think that committee is going to be so critical, like whoever's on that committee, whatever happens in that committee, whatever education happens there, and then that filters, filters out. So I think, I think I would be okay with, we go, we push it there, and then if they change the date, that's fine, but I think we have to start the conversation as well.
Board Member Grimes, do you want to say anything else? Okay, so we are adjourned from this meeting, and we have a closed session after this. Let's take a 10-minute break before our close session.